Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Winger.
Here.
Mayor Johnson.
Here. Corrin being present, would you stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
My Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of April 21, 2011?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
I'll second it.
On the question, any comments, corrections, additions? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. One abstention? At this time, I'd like to recognize Alderman Caddella, some personal privilege time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll keep it brief, unlike a lot of the things I've done up here in the last four years. I promise this will be brief. I want to say it's been an absolute honor serving as your second ward alderman, despite the difficult times and despite the difficult fellow council members at times. I will miss this job nonetheless. Thank you to my family and thank you to my supporters in the community. Your phone calls and offerings of condolence have been touching. In closing, I just want you all to know that I leave this dais proud of every single decision I've made in the last four years. I wonder how many people can leave this dais saying the same thing. Thank you, everybody, for your support.
Zevlin Struck here, I didn't see her. All right, if not, may I have a motion to adjourn the 2009-2011 City Council of the City of Wood Dale signee die?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
On the question. Roll call.
Alderman Caddella.
Yes.
Alderman Coles.
Yes.
Alderman Felice.
Yes.
Alderman Shockey. Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Winger.
Yes.
Motion signee die is a motion to dissolve the city council and never to meet again, and when I bang this gavel, I'm no longer the mayor of the city of Wood Dale. So with that, let me say a few words first. You don't mind, do you, now? Just a couple minutes here.
No problem.
Much like Alderman Caddella, I want to thank the citizens of Wood Dale for giving me the honor and the privilege of serving as alderman and mayor for the last 23 years. And I want to thank the staff of Wood Dale for the wonderful support that you have given me and the city, from the guy who digs the ditches to repair the water mains, to the cops in the street, to the department heads who have made this job very easy, and the city manager as well. I want to thank the elected officials in this room, both past and present, for your service and your assistance. It's been a pleasure to serve with you. They say a man is lucky if a man can count on one hand the amount of good friends that he has, and as I look across this room, I know that I got a lot more than five good friends. And for that, I'm truly blessed and truly a lucky man, and thank you for that. To Mayor-elect Felice, congratulations on your victory, and I pledge my full support and assistance. Any way that I can help you, I'll be glad to do that.
Thank you.
I've thought quite a bit lately about what advice that I should give you on keeping all the aldermen on the same page, going in the same direction. And my advice to you is, good luck with that. I leave you with a solid foundation from which I'm sure that you can move the city forward. Today, we have 12 million cash in the bank and 8 million in our sewer and water reserves. We have a $20 million plant sewer rehab coming up, and if you want to, you could pay cash for it without raising the rates by one cent for the sewer rates. Today, we have 22 million in grants under the name of the city of Wood Dale, and we have 6.4 million in pending grants for sewer, excuse me, for floodwater relief, which has the potential to eliminate flooding in Wood Dale. Today, when I bang this gavel, I will no longer be mayor of Wood Dale, but I take up a new title and one that I'm also proud to hold, and that is going to be a citizen of the city of Wood Dale, and I look forward to good things coming. To Mayor-elect Felice, Alderman Alexis Sismarski, Winger, Woods, and Lazara, and to the existing elected officials and staff and citizens of Wood Dale, I leave you with the words of an Irish proverb. "May the road rise slowly up to meet you. May the wind and the rain be forever at your back. May the sun shine warmly on your face, and may the Lord always hold you in the palm of his hand." Good night, farewell, and God bless.
Good evening, everyone. We are fortunate this evening to have as our presiding official over these ceremonies the Honorable Judge Richard Russo. Judge Russo has an extremely distinguished career in the legal community, first as a Chicago police officer and next as a practicing attorney, where he was recognized by his peers and earned the distinction of a preeminent lawyer. Judge Russo was appointed to the circuit court bench in 2008. He serves as a circuit court judge for DuPage County, and I'd like to have everyone give him a warm welcome here in Wood Dale to one of our most distinguished judges, Judge Richard Russo. And at this time, Judge Russo will be presiding over these ceremonies. He will ask those individuals who are being sworn in tonight to present themselves over there. Those of you who have cameras, don't be bashful. If you wish to take photographs, please do step up. He'll stand there. If you have a family Bible or family members that any of you wish to have join you, please do not be bashful. Judge Russo is used to having company, so please feel free to step forward. We will start first with the Honorable Nunzio Felice will be the first to be sworn in. Again, don't be bashful with the cameras if you wish to move forward.
Raise your right arm and repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Nunzio Felice.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
And affirm.
And affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The rules, regulations, and ordinances, and resolutions of the city of Wood Dale.
The rules, regulations, and ordinances. And the city of Wood Dale.
And will faithfully and honestly discharge the duties of the office.
Will faithfully and honestly discharge the duties of the office.
For the city of Wood Dale.
For the city of Wood Dale.
And to the best of my ability. So help me God. Congratulations.
The next will be Shirley Seibert, city clerk.
Raise your right arm and repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Shirley Seibert.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
And affirm.
And affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The rules, regulations, ordinances.
Rules, regulations, and ordinances.
And the resolutions of the city of Wood Dale.
And the resolutions of the city of Wood Dale.
Will faithfully and honestly.
Will faithfully and honestly.
Discharge.
Discharge.
The duties of the office.
Discharge the duties of the office.
Of the city clerk.
Of the city clerk.
For the city of Wood Dale.
For the city of Wood Dale.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
The next individual to be sworn in will be Suzanne Williams, the city treasurer.
Raise your right arm and state after me. Aye, state your name. Do solemnly swear and affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Illinois, the rules, regulations, ordinances, and resolutions of the city of Wood Dale, and will faithfully and honestly discharge the duties of the office of treasurer for the city of Wood Dale, to the best of my ability, so help me God. Congratulations.
The next for a return tour of duty is alderman Christine Winger.
Raise your right arm and repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Christine Winger.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
And affirm.
And affirm.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The rules.
The rules.
Regulations.
Regulations.
Ordinances.
Ordinances.
And resolutions.
And resolutions.
Of the city of Wood Dale.
Of the city of Wood Dale.
Will faithfully.
Will faithfully.
And honestly.
And honestly.
Discharge.
Discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of alderman.
Of alderman.
For the city of Wood Dale.
For the city of Wood Dale.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God. Congratulations.
Next is newly elected alderman Art Woods.
Raise your right arm and repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Arthur Woods Jr.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
And affirm.
And affirm.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The rules.
The rules.
Regulations.
Regulations.
Ordinances.
Ordinances.
And resolutions.
And resolutions.
Of the city of Wood Dale.
Of the city of Wood Dale.
And will faithfully.
And will faithfully.
And honestly.
And honestly.
Discharge.
Discharge.
The duties.
The duties.
Of the office of alderman.
Of the office of alderman.
For the city of Wood Dale.
For the city of Wood Dale.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God. Congratulations.
The next, also newly elected alderman, is Mike Sismarski.
You want to come back here?
Sure, thanks.
Okay. Now raise your right arm. Repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Michael Sismarski.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
And affirm.
And affirm.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The rules.
The rules.
Regulations.
Regulations.
Ordinances.
Ordinances.
And resolutions.
And resolutions.
Of the city of Wood Dale.
The city of Wood Dale.
And will faithfully.
And will faithfully.
And honestly discharge.
And honestly discharge.
The duties of.
The duties of.
The office of alderman.
The office of alderman.
For the city of Wood Dale.
For the city of Wood Dale.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God. Congratulations.
And finally, another newly elected alderman, Frank Lazara.
Last but not least. Raise your right arm and repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Frank Lazara.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
And affirm.
And affirm.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The rules.
The rules.
Regulations.
Regulations.
Ordinances.
Ordinances.
And resolutions.
And resolutions.
Of the city of Wood Dale.
Of the city of Wood Dale.
And will faithfully.
And will faithfully.
And honestly.
And honestly.
Discharge.
Discharge.
The duties.
The duties.
Of the office of alderman.
Of the office of alderman.
For the city of Wood Dale.
For the city of Wood Dale.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God. Congratulations.
On behalf of the alderman, the newly elected alderman and elected officials, and the citizens of the city of Wood Dale, I'd like to express our gratitude for the Honorable Richard Russo taking time out of his schedule to join us this evening and preside over these ceremonies. So, your honor, thank you so much.
Thank you much. Good luck to all of you. We're going to take a short recess. Short recess.
I'd like to call a meeting in order. Roll call, please.
Alderman Coles.
Here.
Here.
Alderman Shockey. Alderman Sismarski.
Here.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Winger.
Here.
Alderman Woods.
Here.
Mayor Felice.
Here.
Communications and petitions. Citizens to be heard. Any citizens wish to be heard?
Yes, right here.
Could you step to the podium, please? Kerry LaRocco, 612 Vermin Drive. I'd like to show you some before pictures.
Excuse me, sir. What are...we have before pictures of...
It's my property before the next set of pictures.
Could you explain...could I go on, mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Could you explain what we're talking about here? I see pictures of a little boy in a Jeep and what your concern is first.
Bear with me.
Okay.
No problem. Okay. These are the after. Go ahead, sir. What I want to know is, why is it that every time my neighbors do projects, it costs me money? I want to know why a new fence goes up and it starts looking like that. After it's inspected, they come out. None of that wood was there, and all of a sudden, it's there. I want to know why a trench that the village board members came up with, and it's not being maintained, it's blocked off. I got more pictures of that. This is pictures of my neighbor. This is my trench. Yeah, I got more. Is John Forrest here? Actually, we're getting him right now. Mr. Forrest is here. John, you know the issues here. I want to know why those...that fence, it was changed, and why that lumber is stuck underneath that brand-new fence. It's not even a year old, and it looks like it's 100 years old. I want to know why the village is not taking care of the issues in the trenches, and why they're not opening up, and how come mine's the only one that's opened up and the rest of them are all failing? All right. If you can give your information to Mr. Forrest, and we'll... I've done that route. He's done nothing. He has his secretary screen his calls. When I go there, he ducks me, and then she tells me he's not there, and all of a sudden, he shows up. This has been going on for...since '91. Since '91. Go ahead, Mr. Murphy.
Perhaps if you could...if I can get your contact information, I can have a talk with you and Mr. Forrest together. Hopefully, we can resolve this. Obviously, it's been going on for quite some time.
Is it going to happen today?
Probably not, no.
Sir, sir, you have to go to the podium if you want to speak. Anybody else wants to address the committee, council? Okay, next item is written communiques. I have none tonight. Next is mayor's report. That's under mayor's report. We'll start with Wood Dale Junior High Car Wash, Saturday, May 14th, class of 2011, 8:00 AM to noon. In an effort to keep the ticket price down for the eighth grade dance, we're asking for your help to raise money by participating in a car wash. All proceeds will go towards the eighth grade dance. Volunteers needed. This car wash will not be successful without your help. Next item is a proclamation. I declare the month of May as Motorcycle Awareness Month. Next item, a resolution expressing appreciation for services extended by Evelyn Struck to the city of Wood Dale. Is there a motion to approve the resolution? Do I have a motion by the council?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, a resolution expressing the appreciation for services extended by John Caddella to the city of Wood Dale. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Is there...any discussion? Alderman Roy Wesley.
Mr. Mayor, is there...do we have a plaque for these people?
Yes.
Are you going to read the resolution to the public?
Yes.
I would like to save my comments till after the statement of reading the resolution.
Okay. John. Okay, resolution expressing the appreciation for services extended by John Caddella to the city of Wood Dale. Whereas John Caddella has devoted his experience, knowledge, and dedication while serving in elective office in the city of Wood Dale as alderman of the second ward from May 7, 2007, to May 5, 2011. And whereas John Caddella served as a city of Wood Dale as an alderman of the second ward and has served the community and needs of all citizens of Wood Dale in a manner that was nonpartisan and based on what was best for the community. And whereas John Caddella served unselfishly and diligently on the city council standing committees, including the zoning board of appeals and planning building zone...planning zoning building committee. And whereas John Caddella played a vital role in the creation of unified development ordinance and was responsible for the conceptual design and construction process of the 2009 train station. And whereas the residents of Wood Dale and the residents of the second ward appreciate John Caddella for his distinguished service to the city. And now, therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Wood Dale, DuPage County, Illinois. Thank you, John.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Wesley.
I'd just like to say thank you for John for serving citizens of Wood Dale Ward 2. It's been an honor to serve with you as an alderman. I've learned a lot from you as being the second ward alderman, and I really appreciate for your service. Thank you.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
I will make a comment. I...John will be sorely missed up here. He knew a lot about the building and zoning. He had a big role on redeveloping, building our train station and changing some architect work in the train station. work, and the train station came out very beautiful. I will deeply miss him. He has served on the City Council for the best. I mean, we may not see eye to eye on some issues, but when we left here, we were still friends, and we will always be friends, even though he has leave this dius at this time. So, I commend John for outstanding job that he has served, see Wood Dale for four years. Thank you.
Alderman Coles.
I'd like to say that John and myself will be healed. I'll be really missing him because me and him seem to get along, and between the two of us, we did produce the railroad station, even though it took about five years to do it. But we hustled and hustled and hustled, and we finally got it built. So, I appreciate everything that John's done for the City of Wood Dale, and I hope he continues to be around. Thank you.
Okay, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All opposed? Motion carries. Just checking, John. Next item is a resolution expressing appreciation for services extended by Samuel Lewitin to the City of Wood Dale. Is there a motion?
Make that motion.
Second. Any discussion? Okay, resolution... Oh, wait, wait. Let me read it. Whereas Samuel Lewitin has developed his experience, knowledge, and dedication while serving in elective office in the City of Wood Dale as Alderman of the Fourth Ward for four years from May 7, 2007, to May 5, 2011. And whereas Samuel Lewitin served unselfishly and diligently on the City Council's Standing Commissions, including the Community Economic Development Committee and the Public Health, Safety, and Judiciary Committee. Whereas Samuel Lewitin served the City of Wood Dale and has served the community and the needs of all the citizens of Wood Dale in a manner that was nonpartisan and based on what was best for the community. And whereas Samuel Lewitin played a vital role in updates of the City of Wood Dale, Administrative Directive 05-07, contractual insurance guidelines. And whereas the residents of the City of Wood Dale and the residents of Ward Four appreciate Samuel Lewitin for his distinguished service to the city, and now, therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Wood Dale, DuPage County, Illinois. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next. Resolution expressing the appreciation for services extended by Kenneth B. Johnson to the City of Wood Dale. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion to refer.
A resolution expressing appreciation for services extended by Kenneth P. Johnson to the City of Wood Dale. Whereas Kenneth P. Johnson has devoted his experience, knowledge, and dedication while serving in elective offices in the City of Wood Dale as Alderman of the Second Ward for nine years and mayor for 12 years. And whereas Kenneth P. Johnson was a part of numerous years of surplus budgets, guided the city through 9/11, the floods, and blizzards, and developed Office of Special Events, and reestablished the Summer Fest with great success. And whereas Kenneth P. Johnson served the City of Wood Dale as an Alderman of the Second Ward and mayor, meeting the needs of all citizens of Wood Dale in a manner that was nonpartisan and based on what was best for the community. And whereas Kenneth B. Johnson, highlights of his career, volunteer attorney for the Wood Dale Homeowners Association, Board of Directors of the O'Hare Noise Comptability Commission, Board of Directors of the Page Mayors and Managers, and most recently was appointed by Governor Quinn to serve on the task force for the Elgin-O'Hare Expressway. Now, actually, there's one missing. There's a...